February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. It is three thirty P. M. We are at the Cape Canaveral City Council City Hall Chambers for our workshop meeting at one hundred Polk Avenue in Cape Canaveral, Florida. I call this meeting to order. Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Here.
Mayor Morrison?
Here.
Councilmember Willis?
Here.
This time is public participation portion of the meeting. Anyone who would like to speak on an item, please, we ask that you submit a card. I don't have any cards at this time. And those of you, in the event we might, the audio issue that we're experiencing is resolved, if you'd like to speak at any point, maybe during the meeting, and you're able to raise your hand, we will recognize you and do our best to facilitate a remote public participation. With that, we'll go ahead and close public participation portion of the meeting. We have one item for discussion today at this workshop, which is EV charging station additional options, new trends in the state of the industry discussion. This is submitted by Councilmember Jackson. With that, Councilmember Jackson, if you'd like, please, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. You're gonna, we're gonna talk today about some of the options that we have available and some of the information that I've gained on our EV chargers since we have installed the swipers. So this workshop's gonna be to explore and define how to keep our EV charging stations under evaluation and profitability, looking at cost benefit analysis, and also taking a look at the state of the industry and ensuring that our program for chargers covers themselves. We'll also talk a little bit about reporting and hopefully come to a consensus on what council would like to see as far as the EV chargers and reporting so that we can monitor them. So, City Clerk, if you would put up the PowerPoint for me, please.
And also, it looks like our monitors are off. Should we power those on? And if so, I think it's, is it down at the bottom right? Or I can wait on you. Yeah, maybe a little power flicker or something. So, Councilmember Jackson, do you have a PowerPoint that we'll see? Looks like Councilmember Willis is operating.
Guys?
Today's the day of challenges.
Okay, let everyone get settled back in. Thank you, City Clerk.
So your PowerPoint is the attachment surprise?
Yes.
Okay. So that's page one.
It's on down, I believe, in that document. That's one we will go back and refer to. Mia? Thank you. Okay, so that was really the header page. We're gonna talk about our EV chargers and how we can take a look at these things. I just went through that. Now, thank you, City Clerk, that's exactly where we need to be. So we need to take a look at determining the net present value of the EV charging project, see if that was done in the beginning. This is not necessarily something that municipalities will often do. However, if you wanna look at profitability and making sure that we get our return on our investment for these chargers, then we would wanna take a look at that. So we would determine cash inflows and outflows, determine the discount rate and the equivalent annual costs, and we would provide, look at providing to council and the city manager in the future, the equivalent annual cost for the charging stations, including the annual cost of owning, operating, and maintaining that asset over the entire lifespan. And this gives us the ability to make capital budget decisions related to the charging stations and make sound decisions on the cost effectiveness of the city asset and its lifespan. And so, not knowing whether we've done this before, because I was not on council when this occurred, we would wanna take a look at going back and looking at each year so we know our total cost of our investment. So we would then take a look and determine if there's a negative net present value for the project, which would indicate that that expected rate of return will fall short and the project will not create value. So normally, you would start this before the project when you're looking at a capital asset such as any type of equipment. So the net present value is used to calculate the value of the project, and it gives us the present value of the cash inflows and the present value of cash outflows over a period of time, which we definitely need to have that available with this because of the fact that in the beginning, when EV charging stations became popular, the way to get people to convert to EVs was to offer free charging, which is a pretty attractive deal, not having to pay for your fuel costs. However, over time, cities and states and municipalities have found out that this is a very, can be a very expensive and costly endeavor if you have a lot of people charging. So, a lot of people, a lot of cities and states have made changes to where they are going in, and just like the city of Cape Canaveral, we've put swipers on the machines. So we would look at the cash inflows, the present value of the cash outflows over a period of time, and we use this in corporate, or in capital budgeting and investment planning so that we can analyze the profitability of a projected investment or project. And the result of the calculations will find that, and give us a current value of future streaming of payments so that we know what to expect, and we would use a discount rate, which I'm gonna give you a little bit of information on that on next slide. And when you get a positive net present value, then you know your project's worth looking at, and if it's a negative net present value, that means you're gonna have to pay to keep that project going. So the net present value is used to calculate the current value of the future stream of payments from a company, project, or investment. And to calculate that, you have to estimate the timing and amount of future cash flows and pick a discount rate equal to the minimum acceptable rate of return. The discount rate may reflect your cost of capital or the returns available on the alternative investments of comparable risk. And if the net present value of a project or investment is positive, it means its rate of return will be above the discount rate. So this is, these are calculations that we would have our financial director do. So the total investment cost and actual amount spent to date, what we would be looking at, and what I would recommend and hope that I can get a consensus with council today is discuss the cost spent on the EV chargers since we install them and from the inception of the adoption of the devices. The initial cost, any installation cost, our maintenance cost, our electricity cost before the swiper install and upgrade, and also after that install and upgrade, any repair costs, any replacement equipment costs, upgrade costs, maintenance contract price and terms, and the value of the grants that we received for the equipment. And part of the equivalent annual cost calculation, the council should have totals spent to date to determine the value and ability to recoup expenses on the project. And we missed the page. There we go. Was that, City Clerk, is that? I think there's several before that. Nope, that was it. Okay. Okay, so here is an example of the cost to charge a Tesla Model Three and Model Y, range and charging times along with the cost to charge. And you'll see, for example, we have a Level Two charging equipment, that's the type of equipment that we have. So at fifty-seven point five kilowatt hours, you have ten point four hours to charge the car, and if the car has the capability of seventy-nine kilowatt hours and the equipment, then you have eleven point five hours to charge the vehicle. And you'll see these are specs sourced from Tesla, and you'll see the rates below. So you'll see that low rate states, and these are averages, with the fifty-seven point five kilowatt hour, with low rate states, it's seven dollars and fifty cents, high rate states, twenty-seven eighty, and with DC fast charging, twenty-seven fifty-eight. So that's our cost for that fifty-seven point five, and you will also see that with the seventy-nine kilowatt hour types of models. So the Tesla Model Three and Model Y cost around eighty-two dollars to charge, and you'll see according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the average price of electricity in the U.S. is seventeen cents per kilowatt hour. I do not know what ours is here, so that's something we could investigate. In energy in cheaper cities like St. Louis and Seattle, you can pay as little as thirteen. But we'd need to make sure that we're covering the cost to charge as well as aligning ourselves to our market as far as the kilowatt hour prices. So specs from Tesla, once again, eighty-two kilowatt hour battery will cost an average of thirteen ninety-four for a full charge across the country. And there are cheaper states you will have that may pay ten sixty-six, while more expensive regions could be thirty-nine, thirty-six. And this is all with their superchargers, or those are not their superchargers. The superchargers range between fifty cents and a dollar per kilowatt hour. So it all depends upon the level of the charger as well as the cost of the consumption in There's another example of charge costs for a Tesla A as well as Model S and a Model X, and you'll see a twenty volt level one plug point will take an excruciating per Tesla, per a, this is actually from an article that spoke about the Tesla charging, one hundred and thirty-five hours to recover a full battery capacity from an empty state of the charge. And if you have a two hundred and forty volt point, this decreases it to eighteen hours. And so there are different speeds based on those level of chargers, and this is just giving you an idea of those things, how many miles they'll go as far as their range and on how many hours of charge. So now it's the next slide, City Clerk, thank you. The Cybertrucks also, I've given you information on those. Once again, we're using Level Twenty-two, or Level Two chargers, so you're looking around twenty-two hours to charge that truck if you have one in the area. And the next slide, thank you. Actually, one, yeah, I think we missed, no. Yep. So the length of the current warranty on our chargers, council did vote in to take an extended warranty, so we ended up with a five-year warranty. And I would like to take a look at what is covered under that warranty, the labor terms, are there any parts that are not covered, and look at the projected annual maintenance contract price for all the chargers at the end of the warranty so that we know what to expect when the warranty ends. So my recommendation is that we take a look and implement solid documentation policies for financial feasibility reporting to ensure our return on our investment and to ensure that our strategy is correct for pricing on the charging. When, we would wanna look at when our projected return data, our return on investment date would be with all of the costs, meaning from the original installation, which will define the amount and period that that income would be expected to be earned on the investment in order to break even, to reach that break even point. The projected amount needed for return on investment, including loans, interest, and all costs, including electricity consumed, and that should be projected as well. And do we have previous numbers used for pricing strategies, costs, et cetera, to ensure we're gonna maximize our return on investments? So do we need to adjust any prior calculations if those financials have been calculated? And do we need to make changes based on the state of the industry? And then taking a look at usage reporting, I was very pleased with the reports that I saw and received from our resiliency manager. Zach showed me the report straight out of the system. It gives great information, so that's a good thing. So we should take a look at utilizing those reports because that helps us gauge whether or not the utilization on the chargers are at maximum capacity. We wanna make sure that we're getting our return on investment on the equipment. We have some, and so I would recommend looking at it no less than quarterly because things change rapidly, and they have changed rapidly, rapidly since we've installed the equipment. So our current reports that we have available, the system has some basic reports, and then Zach had told me that he can customize reports for us based on what we may want to see. So the use reporting should be provided, in my opinion, and hopefully council will agree, that we should take a look at use reporting and look at how many charges did we have, the number of charge hours, the cost of charging to the city, meaning the kilowatt hours and the associated cost, the income we earned from the price of charging, whether we have a net negative or a positive amount, and look at maintenance and repair reporting so that we know if we are having any issues whatsoever with the chargers, and then any additional data that Zach could give us in order to keep us up to date and make sound decisions on what's going on. And this is just one of the sample reports. This is a bar graph, it's showing revenue with locations. So you have graphic types of reports available, and that's really what I was wanting to show you on this. However, if you take a look at the next report, you'll see this is a financial report with the usage. And one thing I noticed, it shows you the session date and the location and the fees as well as the charging amount, parking, because if they leave it on the charger past it being fully charged, I believe the city has a fee for that as well. And then the thing that I have highlighted is we have no tax available. And I'm gonna ask you, City Manager, please, to explain about the gas tax going down.
We currently do receive a local option gas tax. We have for many years, all cities do. And of course, as gas consumption goes down statewide, that tax comes down as well.
And so we've seen a negative, we've seen it go down?
Yeah, it's been fluctuating downward.
Okay, and that could be from charging. So we may want to look at, anyone that puts gas in their car ends up paying state taxes and local taxes. So we may wanna look at bumping that up if we find that financially we're low on what we're expecting for our return on investment.
I have a question. Wouldn't the amount that we're charged based upon kilowatt hours that we're receiving include a tax from FPL?
The, so FPL pays a franchise fee to the city? That's correct. Is it based on consumption? I'm not sure exactly.
The sales tax is in there as well, which is the local, but yeah, the city gets a portion of the franchise fees. It's not, it's based on the total dollar amount cost of the energy, not per kilowatt hour, from what I understand.
Okay. All right, so this one shows some of the totals for a ten-day period in December. I just pulled out, and you'll see that some of these totals are really low. So we have to take a look at how we're gonna anticipate ever hitting our return on investment, return on investment with the charges being so low cost. But we also have to stay somewhat aligned with whatever markets we have here in Florida and that sort of thing. So that's one thing we'd wanna take a look at in reporting. And this next one, you'll see the longest charge that we had with the kilowatt hours being forty-four point six-two kilowatt hours. I used a, an estimate of fourteen cents because I'd remembered that figure, whether that's actually what we're charging here with the city. So you see, we're looking at a six dollar and twenty-five cent amount to charge this. And we would have to look at our total number of charges and look at our numbers to closely align whether we're gonna reach our return on our investment, even on just the upgrade alone. So that's something we might wanna take a look at in reporting. Now this shows us revenue generated from December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three to February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, and all of our charges from that period totaled up to one thousand fifty-five dollars. And you'll see the orange highlighted are weekend charges. So when Zach sent me the report, that was the entire period that it covered, and that's a low amount, you know, when you've just spent a hundred and eight thousand dollars for the upgrade. We need to seriously think of how we're gonna keep an eye on this going forward and what we might wanna do to make modifications in order to try to recoup some of our investment on this. The next page will show you the other months. This was one long page, so I put it on two pages here. So you'll see, like, on the eleventh of January, we had six charges and we earned thirty-three The next chart, you'll see this is another, one of the bar graphs, one of the graphics that's available. So they're, the system's really robust on being able to provide us with information if we can determine what we'd like to look at or take recommendations from the staff so that we know that we can take a look at number of charges, the usage that we have, how long they're charging, and what we're recouping. And then with maintenance reports, I think that it would be great for council to be able to be aware of the reports for maintenance and, as well as our city manager, and look at, but not limited to looking at, did we have any service tickets on the chargers? And our city manager might already have this information, but were there any service tickets, the types of failures and frequencies? There are quality of service figures that usually tech vendors can give you. Did we have any complete outages on any of the stations? Do we have any open repair tickets pending? What is the resolution of the closed repair tickets and what costs were involved? Sometimes there are things that are not coverable under warranty and labor, so those are things that we might wanna look at. One thing that I did speak with Zach about, and our system is AI intelligent, and it is somewhat self-healing, it has a bot that diagnoses its, any issues within it. So a lot of times it can close out and repair itself. So this is where we get a little interesting, and that's because there are huge changes going on in the market right now, and it just takes a little bit of time to sit down doing a search on these. It's really, right now, it's really somewhat volatile, and it's changed a lot since this vote in September to upgrade the stations. So I think it would behoove us as a council to keep an eye on our costs for this and our return on our investment. So with the market right now, we have some decline indicators that manufacturers and technology look at. They always look at, are there competitors that are laying people off? That also indicates, hey, their competitor's product is declining. Product, production decreases indicates market decline, and then market demand and fueling costs can also indicate decline. And of course, falling stock projections or end-of-year income projections can also indicate decline. So now, here's where we get to have fun, Clerk, because it goes back up to the top. I'm so sorry. So I put together a document for you that is the state of the industry document to take a look at some of these things, and I've, I specifically am highlighting decline because we know how popular EVs, the news market has been for EVs over the last five or six years, there's been a real push for them. So what I'm looking at, what I was looking at is decline, and the reason that I did that is when you're in technology and you're looking at it, are you gonna make your return on investment? That's what you focus on. You don't focus on, woo, we're, well, focusing on we who we're doing great is always wonderful, but you have to keep an eye open for decline indicators. So you'll see in this document, we have some examples of market decline, and so I'm really concerned about a drop in charging. Some of the EV manufacturers have reported losses in excess of billions, while most are looking at rolling out hybrid models that will potentially lessen the possibility that people will charge by fifty percent because you can use gas with the hybrid models. So I think we have to keep an eye on this. So right now, we currently have people here, it's our peak season, and so our chargers should be fairly busy if there's a huge demand for this. And what we say in technology, one of my friends says this, is we wanna be on the leading edge but not the bleeding edge. And being able to watch this, and the reason that I am bringing this up is because I think it's important to know whether we're gonna have a net negative impact at the end of the year, and monitoring and reporting is one of the best ways to keep an eye on that. So you'll see some examples, the prices have been falling sharply. I sat down just today and couldn't keep up with the number of articles. I sent myself just headlines. So you'll see multiple articles that I've provided for you, all in one document, Ford cutting, shutting down their Ford Lightning product line, they're looking to go out They're looking to go after a new product line with cheaper EVs and after their earnings estimate was not great. They do have people on staff, but they do not have them fully developed. The article goes through a lot of information for that. They're looking at how to generate a profit. Their battery pattern powered models lost four point seven billion last year. And their projects, they are projecting the losses will grow to as much as five point five billion this year. So all of these things are out there now in the media, and it wasn't there in September when this decision was made. And so I think it behooves us to keep an eye on it. So that's Ford and their earnings. A lot of the manufacturers now are going back to their, as they call them, which I thought was the interesting thing, ICE engines, so internal combustion engines, meaning the gas get, gas cars. And so a lot of them are looking at that. They, Ford did have their production, their F one fifty Lightning. And then they're ended up boosting their production on the Bronco. So there are things happening there with Ford. So another article as well on Ford. If you go down to number two, City Clerk, thank you so much. It's reassessing its EV plans, including vertical battery integration. So the Detroit automaker previously confirmed plans to delay or cut twelve billion in spending on all electric vehicles. They reiterated the company still believes that EVs will grow, but noted we have widespread adoption for mass market consumers not happening until the costs are more in line with traditional vehicles. Also saw that today with Tesla, who also created a drop in price on their vehicles just this week. So we do have market decline indicators happening around us. I'll, I'm not going to read every one of these, every word of this. GM, GM is switching gears on its EV strategy. They're taking a look at moving to hybrids. So as a, as per a report by CNBC, General Motors CEO Mary Barra revealed a new strategy that the big three automakers is going to use to pursue changing the automotive landscape going, which is going to be a return to plug in hybrids. So once again, a hybrid, we have a fifty percent chance that they'll charge every time, whether where EV they charge, they have to charge every time. So that's another possibility. The next one is a market information on why users are leaving. And a lot of users are leaving because of range and the anxiety with range. Because right now, there's not enough charging stations when you go on a long road trip. And a lot of people are accustomed to being able to get in the car and go. And there's also problems with, once you get in a car and go on a long road trip, there's recharging issues. So for example, finding the station is the first issue and sitting there long enough to get a charge to where you can go two hundred more miles is the next thing. And as far as adoption, the people are not jumping on that bandwagon as quickly if they take long, long trips. So this has some information in that one for why people were looking at going back to gas powered cars. And then, so a lot of the EVs, the prices have been declining since late in twenty twenty three, started in December really, and some of them as early as October. It's good news for our buyers, but it's bad signs for the industry. And so on the surface, that seems beneficial, but it, experts always warn when you're in a manufacturing industry, when you see steep declines, that typically means that your product doesn't have the stickiness that it needs with the consumers.
Just to back up, Councilmember Jackson, you are on, is the, the, the article, state of the market? Or the whole document, it's called state of the market?
Yes.
Which one I, we just transitioned from the?
This one.
Okay, so where the questions begin, is the one on the screen the correct one?
Nope, if you would go up a little bit. Okay, wait a minute, two actually go down. Thank you, Mayor. Down from there. Thank you. Keep going. Keep going. And on down. And down. Right there.
Okay.
I'm hitting this fairly quickly because I'm trying to make sure.
Because you'll say things, and I know you printed, and so I just want to make sure I'm marking and following along. So thank you. Back to you.
Thank you. So I was, I just spoke to the good news for the buyers and bad signs for the industry. So we have to keep an eye on that in order to to make sure that we're aligning our charging the way that we need to. There are increased competition as far as EVs. Mexico is now looking at housing a production facility for Chinese made EVs. And Tesla has said, this is going to kill the market in our area. So all of these things are happening at once. There's a huge moving target on this, and things are changing rapidly. So we've got shifting incentives, some of the governmental incentives for each EV. Some of that is shifted, so certain people are not getting that incentive anymore. So that is also something that will slow sales down. And once again, users and consumers, the drivers are concerned about battery life concerns because the battery life, once a battery goes out, it's very expensive to replace. The range reduction, the fact that they can't, you know, drive far. And and also the range reduction is deals with the battery and the battery life. Hertz announced plans to sell over twenty thousand of its Teslas from its rental fleet. I spoke to one of our local rental people. She's down in Melbourne, which is a fairly good sized city. And it's Avis, and they absolutely can't get anyone to take those cars for rental. They're having a real problem with renting EVs. So we still see continued growth despite all these challenges that are going on. Because there are short term hurdles, but there were, I mean, really, when you look at the number of gas powered vehicles versus the number of EVs in the United States, it's a low number compared. So the market does have the ability to grow. Toyota, GM, and Ford have all said they're going to look at hybrids versus full EV vehicles. So once again, plug in hybrids, they're looking at, California is looking at a timeline to require all new vehicles be plug in hybrids by twenty thirty five. And so there's a lot of things going on, but most, most of the manufacturers and automakers are taking a look at moving to hybrids so that you've got gas as well as battery power. So it talks a little bit more about, I put some things in here like the electric car myths. And there's an article that tells you about some of the things that are problems. Service and purchase prices and insurance can be higher on the vehicle based on the model. Once again, there are people that are being disqualified for incentives now. So the incentives aren't there. And once the incentives are not there, a lot of people halt or slow their buying. There's elevated repair cars compared to internal combustion engines. And so there's also something I found quite interesting, a shortage of mechanics for the EVs. So there's multiple things happening in the market right now. The next page, if you'll go down, yeah, there you are. You're right. There's the increased insurance rates. There's multiple articles on that because of the intricacy of repairing the vehicles as well as the cost of the batteries. So that's something that is out there as well. Home charging installation is expensive, which plays in our favor as far as people using our, our chargers here in the city. But most people are going to look at, you know, twenty five hundred to thirty five hundred dollars to get the wiring and that type of thing. Cost of electricity slows them down because that actually increases their bill on their home. And then the ongoing maintenance costs are a bit higher for the EVs. There's higher sales tax in some areas and elevated registration fees. A lot of the features are underutilized and depreciation rates are much higher on the EVs. So they lose their value and become a disposable car. People are not going out and buying a used EV. It's hard to do that because if your battery is not up to speed, it will end up costing that person, that consumer, a lot of money more than buying a new car when they look at replacing the car. So the market isn't there for the used, used cars on EVs. So the depreciation rates are high on them. And once again, the charging network is not there yet. And then there are the, based on which manufacturer, there's some differences in the warranty costs that can be a net negative for the consumer. Okay, so if you will go on down, City Clerk, thank you. We're going back to one that says, do we have a marketing strategy? So I think it would behoove the city for us to look at, do we have a marketing strategy on this? We need to market those chargers that are in there and help people know they're available and make it easy for them to use the chargers. I think other than Manatee Park, where the park closes at night, we have them that we can point people to, to charge twenty four hours a day. So before the swipers were put in, we had commercial businesses. And one that I ran into charging myself before I was on council was Avis here in the city. And Avis, they were charging all their vehicles. So have we approached Avis? Have we talked to them? Would you, you know, are you using our service still? How can we market this is what I'm basically getting at. So have we reached out and looked at that? Are there any businesses we can reach out to in order for them to use the chargers, generate income? And do we have any kind of awareness campaign for our residents, snowbirds, and any small businesses that might be open to using the chargers? And city manager, do you know if we have any marketing?
We just have our traditional outreach platforms, and and we did put it out there through a weekly update. There were social media posts and when they were installed. Is it still going on? I'm not, I can't answer that for sure.
Okay.
I, I can share something I do know, I believe, could be wrong, but I think that the way these are also marketed is when the city installed or has had them installed, they go in on other websites. So there's folks that will search a main centralized website, and it'll show you EV stations. You could just Google EV charging station locations, and it would not surprise me if Cape Canaveral is on some of the main ones. I could think Zach said.
Plug Share is one.
Plug Share.
Yeah, you can find them.
So that's where a lot of the people are searching.
And see, that's, that concerns me, although that's wonderful. But with our numbers that were returned for these first sixty days, then that's concerning because we're not getting the charges if we're out there. So I think it would be good to look because of the way the internet is, we know how that can be. Maybe we think we're out there on some and we aren't, or they've dropped us or something like that. I think the more that we could get out there, the better for us, because this is our busy season. And you know what? We won't have people charge, as many people charging after about mid April. So I would think that our numbers would be higher now, and they're not there yet. I mean, that's just my thought.
I think if we increase the hours of operation for them, because right now the parks are closed after a certain time. So if it was basically twenty four seven, and if there's, the sheriff's department has a concern over people staying in the park, if it's not plugged up to a charger, they shouldn't be there. If, if we wanted to regulate it that way, but, you know, that improves the the possibility of revenue. But, you know, you, you present a argument for not having the chargers, but you want to spend money on marketing them also? I'm just, I know, I know, I know, I'm just, we have to be careful of that. But, you know, as far as the profitability of the car makers, it took Amazon nine years before they ever turned a profit. And I may be the only one on the dais that is old enough to remember the early days of personal computing, but it took a long time before the average Joe could ever afford one. I mean, they were outrageous. A laser printer was seven or eight thousand dollars. You couldn't have. Technology will catch up to this, but, you know, having said that, I am not a advocate of government incentives for people to buy electric vehicles. That's not the.
Well, and I want to make sure that my entire premise for this is making sure that we're not coming out of this at the end of the year with a huge amount of money towards our tax, you know, that is taxpayer dollars. If you have a product that you're offering to the public, it should be covering itself. And I agree with you. You know what? Those manufacturers, when they start a new technology, it takes a lot of time. But they don't lose, we, we're seeing billion dollar losses in the EV industry, and that's not a small loss. Any manufacturer with billion dollar losses is paying attention to that bottom line. You can't continue that for two years. You'll lose everything and be shutting the doors. And so, and where I understand what you're saying, Councilwoman Willis, the thing that I'm trying to do, I, me personally, it doesn't really matter what my opinion is personally. Some people, I like choice is what I like. Some people may like gas powered vehicles, some may like electrical vehicles. The thing we have to look at though, and the reason I'm discussing marketing, is because if we aren't making a sound decision to where we are getting this covered in some way, shape or form, we're going to end up paying a lot, and we've already paid a lot. Because if you add all of the cost up over six years or however long these have been installed, I mean, we just spent a hundred and eight to upgrade them. So we've got to look at, how is this going to impact us at the end of the year? And especially if we've got market decline that we didn't have last year. Last year, the decline wasn't there. It's happening now. So we have to look at it.
Can I, I was going to say, I have a question. First of all, I, I wonder, why was staff not, why were they advised that they didn't need to be here? Because with these kind of questions coming up, the ones that have the answers are our staff. So I would have rather had them here, but I have a question for Todd. Maybe you can answer this. There are several projects or services that the city has that we were not expecting to make money. The rec center for, for a certain, you know, Nancy Hansen, whatever. So what was the expectation of the money making? Because it seems like you're wanting to run it as a business, and technically, all the services for the city are not a business. So I would like to know what the expectation, or you may not know, when we first started this. I mean, we want to make money, obviously, but we weren't expecting on some of these services we provide to the city to get rich. So is this one of the services that we were going to provide, not expecting, do you know what I mean, a lot of income? We would expect some income, and of course, we want to make as much as we can. We would expect some income and of course, we want to make as much as we can. But do you know what the expectation was?
Well, this is an experiment. It always was an experiment. In fact, giving it away for free was part of the experiment that we learned from as well. So this is like the next generation of our experiment. We, we learned, we don't want to give it away for free. We wanted to start charging. We put the swipers in so we could recoup some of that investment. But to your question, do we expect to make a profit? What we expected was a break-even period to occur. That's right. But, you know, we're learning as we go. This is 60 days worth of data. But I think you, I think more to the point of your question, not everything we do is profit-oriented, it's service-oriented. For example, the Parks and Recreation Department. One of my first goals as my, as City Manager was to get a handle on what we are putting out for our Parks and Recreation facilities versus what we're taking in. So we went through a very detailed effort in the last couple of years to analyze those rates, look at the, the cost of operating those facilities, and then come back at the end of a year with these rates in place and see, what is that percentage that we are covering? And are we happy with that? So we're getting more of a metric-based way of looking at the return on Parks and Recreation things. And we'll use that information, sure, when we're setting rates for following, for future years, but we're not profiting from it at all. And to my knowledge, no city ever profits from that. It's about providing that service when it comes to that because it's, it's for everybody and the Parks, people, the users of those facilities, whether they use them or not. So not everything is meant to be a profit, to your point, that we do.
Okay.
I, I will certainly open it up to the, the public. I just want to make sure, take a couple steps back. Councilmember Jackson, you were going through the order. Did you get to the end of yours or was your idea to stop here? I just want to make sure you got through everything and then we can.
No, we, we, we stopped, but that's fine.
Well, you, I mean, if you think it's important and we can come back, there's a few that, that I'd like to come back to and, but do you want to finish?
Yes, let me go ahead and finish and we can bring it back to Dais for discussion. Okay, so, and with this marketing strategy, we're just trying to make sure we're, we're getting close to being able to break even like you're talking about. And one comment was made, so I'm going to go ahead and address that. Not everyone uses this service. So how many people do we have? We really don't know. That's one thing. So that's why I was saying, we need to make sure that people are aware they're there, especially during snowbird season, when they'll be utilized the most. We also have areas.
Excuse me, I apologize for interrupting. I just got a text message that my family member is in the ER, so I'm going to leave. Excuse me.
If we can do anything, if a recess would help you.
I appreciate it. I don't know exactly what the situation is, but I'm going to leave, so excuse me.
Understood. Thoughts and prayers are with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson, if.
Okay, so as we look at this, you know, I understand, we're, we're not an enterprise business, but we're offering an enterprise service with chargers. And we also have the port going in with chargers and some other chargers throughout the city. So when, as we look at this and also look at our budget that we just received, our audit, it says inflation is happening and it is. So we need to, in my opinion, it helps us to look at the money that we're spending and what we might expect of it. That's why I'm doing this. So anyway, we'll move on. So the next one, City Clerk. One thing I was curious about because one thing I found out as I was looking, and I like our barrier island and I love Florida's nature, and that is, do we know if any of our batteries end up in the landfill? And the reason I'm asking this is because of the fact that the batteries have to be shipped to a recycling plant and currently there are three of them in the northern portion of the US. The, if I replace my battery at a dealer, my understanding is, they charge me for the battery, they take the old battery. Are they tossing them? Are they shipping them? What is the cost and that kind of thing? These are things that I care about because of the environment, not really related to our costs with the chargers, but I wanted to mention that. So City Clerk, if you would scroll up. The other thing is we have current cities such as Olympia, Washington, that are enacting legislation that addresses EV fires. And during testimony before the Senate Transportation Committee, the fire department officials said a typical fire truck carries 500 gallons of water, but it can take 12 times that amount to put out the typical EV battery fire. So Washington State Senate Bill 5812 is addressing EV fires and other states and cities are also addressing those and firefighting concerns. I am, I'm not aware because I'm a new council member, do we have a firefighting plan in case there's a fire at the charger? What are our liability concerns for the city if we did have a fire? So those are things that I'm curious about. I'm sure that Zach could answer. And then being, we're just looking, I'm just looking at, can we, you know, utilize information that's out there available to us that Zach has and, and also financials to ensure that we're, we're keeping an eye on everything since there, the market is indicating decline. And so being on the space with, the Space Coast with SpaceX and others that depend on the EVs, we need to make informed decisions on how to move forward while ensuring that we've got the EV available to citizens and travelers alike. And if possible, try to save our citizens their tax dollars. So all, in my opinion, all options need to be investigated for intelligent decisions on how to move forward with the market changing and indicating some decline, including what options are being utilized in different cities that were early adopters in the market. So looking at where are chargers in our city besides just the ones we have so that we know which ones are out there because people could be charging off of them. Hotels, the port, any projected sites, which we would consider as competition, we'd want to make sure we, we had the information out there for everyone. And do we have any projections of the number of residents that are installing it in their home? Because we have a lot of people that are doing renovations as well as new properties, builds where they're taking down an older property or building on a vacant lot. So just knowing where, how utilization is occurring within our city would be helpful as well. And so my proposal is just that we take a look at obtaining financials, the reoccurring financials from the staff that I stated earlier, and see if we can get a calculation on total investment, the net present value, the equivalent annual cost and monthly costs such as electricity, and obtain our recurring reports from the staff on the usage via number of charges and financials on the charging stations and obtain the maintenance reports so that we can keep a closer eye as the markets making these wild swings right now on the EVs. And now I will pass it to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Jackson, I want to thank you for the time that you put into this, sourced, documented, and I think this brings a lot of value to the council to read, to understand, and to communicate with the public. While we can get narrowed in on EVs here today, what I'm saying is, is that this approach from time to time makes sense. And if we remove EV out, I love the fact that our council, if we can make it, when we can make it, obviously times we can't, very relevant today, but it, it's a different way of doing business in the city, since I've been on at least. And staff, my opinion on staff resources are costly, but they, they certainly are valuable when they're there. And my hope is that we can, can do more of these and thankfully, our City Manager, City Clerk, and everyone sort of as a minimal is here. This is a way to get in front of some of these items. And your approach with NPV, determining our hurdle rates, if we removed, again, EVs out of that and we replaced it with certain projects, I think that that's really helpful. And so I just wanted to compliment that, you know, workshops haven't been something on these types of issues that we've been able to do in the past. So today is sort of a, an exciting day for me that ignoring what it is, how we're doing it today, is, I believe, the best way for us to do business in, in the city. And it's certainly, you know, we only have so much time. And so being selective and trying to find things that, that really justify it makes sense. I've got some specific comments, I want to pause on that. I know that when I asked for public participation earlier, I don't think our citizens were here at this time, but if council's okay, I'd like to go back to the public. I know that Ms. King would like to speak.
Oh, yes.
So please, if you would like to speak.
Yes, you want your votes to the public?
I, yes, please. Thank you.
Okay. I have three points that I want to make. First of all, I want to say thank you to Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman, for the work that you have put into this. As you know, I put a lot of work into it as well and I'm very impressed with your latitude and depth of knowledge that you have about this particular issue. The analysis process should have been done before the vote was ever taken. And the fact that we have staff who did not do the job that Councilwoman Jackson did, I think should never happen again. We should not attempt to undertake a project that is going to cost the city taxpayer money without doing a thorough analysis of it. Because if this thing bombs, guess what? Some of you are being reelected and some of your jobs might be in jeopardy. This should never happen. The way Councilwoman Jackson has presented it is the, it should be the policy of this city going forward for any kind of, name, name a dollar figure, project that the city is considering undertaking. I'm disappointed that there aren't more people here today. People work, I understand, but I'm speaking for them. That's point number one. Because the taxpayer ends up with the burden if the thing fails, okay? We have an election year coming up. This is a presidential election year and whatever your politics are, I think we can all fairly assume that Trump is going to get elected, if there is an election, but that's a whole other subject. One of his campaign promises is drill, baby, drill. We're gonna, we're gonna get those refineries, those pumping, we're gonna go back to, as he said, the liquid gold. And when that happens, what happens? The price of fuel is likely to go down, further depressing the demand for EVs. Why would you want an EV when it's costing you $80 or something dollars to charge? The price of gas might go back down to maybe, who knows, $1.87 the way it was when he was in office before. I fully expect that to happen. That's point number two. Firefighting plan, I am so glad you brought that up. Because I have read reports, when those batteries, when those, when those cars catch on fire, not only is it a danger to people, humans, but it ruins the pavement. I mean, it just makes an awful mess, not to mention the firefighting efforts that take place. Fortunately, we have firefighters at the port who are trained to handle ship fires. And so they're probably a step above the average municipal firefighting department in terms of knowledge of how to deal with certain fires. This, this could be critical. Fire on 1A? You're not going to get any traffic around there. And do I, am I limited to three minutes?
No, how, you want a?
I have more.
Minute, two minutes more, three minutes?
Yes, please, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes.
Okay. Congresswoman, I've been watching too much national TV. Councilwoman Jackson mentioned that Zach has information that he can be using, okay? Yes, insist upon it, City Manager. He should have been using it all along prior to, and made a presentation like that to the city council before the, the vote was taken, okay? And Councilwoman Jackson, is it possible to get a copy of your presentation so I can study it? Thank you. And that's pretty much all I have to say. My compliments to all of you for being as diplomatic as you are. I find it difficult to be that diplomatic. Thank you.
Thank you. I see the Hodge family is here. Would either one of you like to speak? It's a workshop, so sort of it, it's by preference that, that we can have a conversation together. So yes, thank you for being here.
Sarah Hodge. They sent back 500,000 Teslas to China. I don't know the details, but that doesn't sound good. The fires, they're not allowing them in some hotel areas now. They have to be out. And are we liable as a city if we have them on public property? So I, I don't know the answer, but you do have a liability problem if you have them in an area that would catch fire. And parks would maybe be the only alternative if you do do them so that you don't have the building and the public exposed. And I, I don't have a lot of details because I haven't been studying it, but I trust everything she said. Thank you, Mrs. Jackson.
Thank you. Mr. Hodge? Good, okay. Thank you. Back to the council. And if anything comes up, again, this is a workshop, we can just try to do it in little tranches. So thank you for your patience.
And I wanted to clarify one thing if I may.
Yes.
The reports became available with the upgrade in December. Just so everyone knows, I want, that's something that came with the upgrade. The other chargers had no ability to, before the upgrade, we had no ability to see certain data. Just wanted you all to be aware of that.
Thank you. Mayor Pretem, I saw you raised your hand.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I just, a few things. When this vote came up in September, I was the only one that voted against it and I brought up these, these points that Councilmember Jackson has brought up about the fires and about the market decline and also our city's liability. It passed anyway, it is here now, but I agree that we should definitely keep an eye on, you know, what's happening with the, the market. And also, you know, I don't think you can compare EV charging stations with the rec center. I don't think every taxpayer has a electric car. And we're spending taxpayers' money on a charging system that doesn't benefit all taxpayers. The rec center benefits all taxpayers and it's their choice to join or go or whatever. But if you don't have an EV charger, an EV car, you know, why is your tax money being spent on something that doesn't benefit you? And I think if you're, you know, the city is a business and there are amenities that, that benefit the citizens, but something like this should be making money and not losing money. And I just think that all of these things, I wish I had had this report when, back in September, okay? Things could have maybe turned out different, but I appreciate all your work you did and, you know, I brought a.
That's back then because I just put it together.
Yeah. I, I agree, you know, it is what it is, it's here now, but what's the best way to deal with it and make sure we are not wasting taxpayers' money? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Willis, I know you jumped in earlier on a question. Do you have anything right now, this moment? I'd like to actually propose a quick break. Been at it for about an hour.
That's fine.
And then come back, I got a few comments and City Manager wanted to talk with you as well. So let's do that. It's 4:40 now. as well. So let's do that. It's four forty now. Try to come back. Five, ten minutes? We're all here at four forty-five, great. If not, four fifty, I think it'd be the latest. Yep, there it is, four forty. We'll come back here in five, ten minutes. Thank you. For a reset. I don't see it on, oh.
There you go.
Mine won't go off.
Oh. You have the power. I'm very sorry. Okay, well, it is four fifty-four PM. We call this meeting back to order. Workshop meeting here, discussing EVs. And like I said, if the, we want to go back to the public, maybe after we get through some conversation, it's helpful if you raise your hands and maybe towards the end. Or in between, we'll do that. And thank you again for being here. So bringing it back, Councilmember Willis, I think you had some comments you wanted to make. If so, floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, I'd, I'd hope that we can change the hours of operation for that, for the EV stations. I, I don't think that anything, or any place that we have them would be a problem, making them twenty-four seven. I agree, we need some reports to make sure that we're current on what we're charging to see that we maximize that. But we have them. Let's make the best of them now. And do it, get the reports on a, a scheduled basis that doesn't appear as though we're trying to micromanage or anything. But I think they would be very helpful to have timely reports on what it's costing us, what the revenues are, and if there's any difficulties with the system.
Thank you. So I think this proposal to council, the three bullets here, obtain reoccurring financials from staff, as stated earlier in the presentation. The reason why is to know the total investment, net present value, equivalent annual cost, and monthly costs such as electricity. City Manager, the reports that I think the goal was quarterly.
Yes, sir.
Will those reports, do you see any issue with being able to provide those headers, I guess, that's mentioned in the first bullet?
Well, the first bullet is referring to financials, such as the net present value, equivalent annual, equivalent annual cost. I'm not sure those are ready to be spit out by the, that, that application. I don't think they, I don't think that they are. But that doesn't mean we can't derive them some other way.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
My thoughts on that is obtaining them quarterly with a monthly breakdown. And more than likely, our financial people would have to put the, the costs together.
Yeah, it would be that Zach working with John's department together.
Right. And I think Zach has a lot of the information, so it wouldn't take up a huge amount of staff time, I don't think. Mr. DeMaya, or De, DeLeo would have to let us know.
Yeah, what we, what we can do is just make a wish list out of the, the workshop meeting today, and then I can report back to the council our abilities to provide all that information, capabilities.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think council, as far as consensus and helping City Manager understand that first bullet point, Councilmember Willis, I think when you said having reoccurring, this is one of them. Any of you speak up? Does that sound like a good thing to obtain consensus on quarterly, which may, would it be April?
Uh, we are at sixty days now, so approximately thirty more days from now would be the first quarter.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Is that first bullet point okay with this council? Those items?
I don't think the finance department uses net present value for anything at this point, so they would need to let us know about that.
Yeah, that, that was my point, sir, that I can report back to the council on our ability to provide this information. I don't know.
If we are, my first thing was if we do want to pursue this, it sounds like we'll, we'll find out. With net present value, we would want to provide, I think, direction on what period of time. So do we want the net present value over one year? One month? Five years? Ten years? And so I would just say, sometimes showing a few of those, the one. And so I would just say sometimes showing a few of those, the one, five, ten, same formula, you just sub, substitute it out, would be my hope and request. Because when you just look at one short period of time, NPV could be negative, but you know, you, you get to five year and it, and it goes positive. And so that's just data, does it mean yes or no? And city manager, I think you talked about payback period. That one's not in here, I think that is one that we were tracking already and looking at. And if we took the six stations and spread the total investment out, which we, you know, our, our budget book last year shows those costs, and then the ongoing fees. I think it was a hundred twenty-nine thousand over the next five years total, in which the majority of it was upfront to purchase the equipment. And I think it was twenty-five hundred, or I have it in the budget book over here, but that's obviously what we do know today, forecasted. And then the, you know, comparing the actuals to that, and now with the reporting in revenue, I think we'll be able to see all, a payback period, net present value. And I think that approach on, you know, that template, if you will, would be very helpful because that's really what it comes down to is when you, you know, if we're looking at net present value as a metric that we value and we think is very important information. Question becomes, okay, you got a positive NPV, but that doesn't always mean we should do that thing. Because you might have a higher NPV for the, you know, same funds, opportunity cost. And so we wouldn't be able to compare net present value to anything. And so that would be sort of the last thing I would, just no action needed other than once we get this and if we determine we can, it would be good to maybe pick one or two other types of investments within the city so that we can compare even better is as we're approaching this year's budget to make those decisions forward-looking and to say, well, here, here's where it is. So if that's good, I think, city manager, I want to jump back to you. Think that makes sense? We'll, we'll find out what you come back with.
Yeah, this, yeah, this is a learning curve for me and my staff's capabilities. So what I'm, I'm trying to help maybe form a motion for the council's consensus would be.
Make a motion.
Wouldn't be a motion, just be consensus.
You don't care, we ask for consensus.
Right. So I, I think start with consensus to direct city manager to provide a report to city council on the capability, staff capability of providing quarterly financial reports to include total investment, net present value over period, and we'll come up with a recommendation, equivalent annual cost, monthly costs including maintenance, projected payback period, usage, and any problems.
And then, and the things that you're already doing, I mean, it's not necessarily remove and replace. So like I said, we see the five year. And yes, what you said is, is what I, what I hear too. Do, does any, do we have consensus on that? If anyone opposes, please speak.
And it is the, a report on our capability to provide this, and then there'll be more, there'd be further direction from that.
Yeah, I would think if you can, ha, having the data, you know, we meet slow, it's once a month. So if we come back with the capability at the next meeting and then it's another month, to me, the quarterly reports were coming, it'd be about confirming the capability to add it to that report that was already, okay, is that?
The, the financial piece.
Yes.
To it, yeah.
Okay, yes, that sounds good. The second one, obtain reoccurring reports from staff on usage via numbers of charge stations and financials on those charging sessions. So while the first bullet talks about total cost and sort of the bigger picture from an investment perspective, this is going to show kind of how, if, if revenue is coming into the city, this will show us how and, and what type of usage is driving that revenue.
It'll show us trends.
Mm-hmm.
Usage trends.
So that report, I think the city is already, the, the software provides that.
Usage trends, yes, but it also says, and financials on those charging stations.
So dollars.
Does have the financials in there for what we're charging.
Okay, okay.
What our, our cost to the, to the consumer is.
So it doesn't mean provide total investment, net present value, equivalent annual cost on a per station basis?
No, I mean, literally just the usage, you know, and the number of charges, just like we saw in the example of the report.
Yeah, that would.
Once we know if, and what, what I would envision is that if the cost per kilowatt hour to the city changes, that'd be something that y'all would notify us as far as staff. And then that way, we would know when we're looking at the total number of charges and hours, kilowatt hours, would know that we had a positive or negative impact.
Does to me, city manager.
Yes.
I know you're taking a note, and while he's doing that, this is the report that we can produce today. And I think what you're talking about is this shows usage sessions per day, and I think it, it was able to extract the dollars out of that. But just to talk in real time to get, I think, bullet number two. Today, since twelve-five, December fifth, twenty-twenty-three, the, there has been a total of three hundred nineteen total plugins, which has resulted in one thousand eighty-two dollars in total revenue as of two fourteen yesterday. So that's really, since it started in twelve-five, that wasn't a full month, five days short. January was really the first full month. And yes, I think the trend, that's, when you plot that over time, that's the trend that you can see. And that's what I'm showing is, that's a report that our city, the software can, can do today. And I think, again, this is just data that will be helpful.
And along with those, that, with these that talk about the individual charges and which station they're on, we can tell which ones are being utilized. Because if there's a station being utilized, it may ju, or not being utilized, it may just be in the wrong spot where people aren't going to that spot to charge if the other ones are carrying good numbers. So with a combination of that report as well as these, the ones that I included in the presentation, you can really gain a lot of information and make changes if we needed to.
So I, I don't have an issue with that one. City manager, if you, it sounds like we can do that too, and if you're ready, I can take consensus.
Yeah, and please, I do think I have a full understanding of where we're going, but it, it's possible, Councilmember Jackson, that we may need to consult with you a little bit more to make sure that the report's going to be meaningful than the way that you want.
Absolutely, I'm happy to help.
That's great.
And Zach has this down, Pat, so he and I, with you, together, we can get what we need so that we can keep a solid hand on it.
Hey, council, if anyone opposes what I'm calling bullet number two, please speak up. Otherwise, we'll assume we have consensus. Issues, good?
I see heads nodding yes, yes.
Yes, no opposed. The third and final bullet on this particular side is to obtain reoccurring maintenance reports from the staff to no current outages and repairs, including any cost. And so that, that's really important because, you know, if the data dips because a charging station isn't available, that's very different than that, and so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure the outages would be in the, the normal report already anyways. But any repair costs wouldn't normally be in there, so that would be manually added in, yeah.
Okay. Any issues with that one, council?
All of that's included on the dashboard, as it is, so.
Except for repair costs.
Yeah, yeah, but you have to wage warranty versus.
Right, right.
Okay, well, with that, I know that there was some, I wanted to make sure we got through what was most important, that these are the few proposals. Councilmember Willis brought up a kind of a fourth one, I'll add, and we can keep adding, about the accessibility of the stations. I think that opening up the parks twenty-four seven is different than city hall due to our current code and policy. Overnight parking is not allowed in the parks, but city hall, I think people could technically come here and, and park. So it would be, that, that would be the least amount of friction or resistance to, to do at one site if we wanted to do that. And then I think we have to go into potentially couple, public hearings to change the code unless, so maybe having our city attorney look into the path to make that happen?
Or just. Just to make the E. V. Charging available. I mean, the C. Five, I mean, it's right there on a parking lot, so, which is accessible from the street. It's not like you're going into the park there, you're just accessing the E. V. Charging stations in a, in the periphery parking lot. It just seems like a simple fix. I know we have to go through whatever the codes are for the parks, but.
I think we would, excuse me, Mayor, I think we would have to create an exception in our code for vehicles actively charging as opposed to just parking there and not charging.
Mayor Pertem?
Yeah, I just, I think that, you know, at the C. Five, when it's right on the road and here at, at city hall is different than the parks. I think opening the parks twenty-four seven is just asking for trouble and adding a burden on the sheriff's department to patrol the area to see who's plugged in, who isn't plugged in, what's going on. I would not be in favor of opening the parks twenty-four seven for E. V. Charging. And then my other concern is, you know, as we, as the market bears and people add these E. V. Charging to their homes or hotels add them and trailer parks and the other places that we talked about, that's going to make it less and less, people are going to use our demand, you know, for our stations. So I just think that, you know, we, I think that we should, with these reports, definitely keep an eye on where we're going with this, but I, I would not. I just think opening the parks twenty-four hours a day is, I mean, we have enough vandalism now with them being closed and just, you know, making the sheriff's department do extra runs around the parks and see who's in there and what's happening. I just think it's a lot and it doesn't benefit all of the people in the city. And is it going to be extra money for the sheriff's department to keep an eye on the places? My opinion, anyway.
Okay, so it's a good, city hall and C. Five, we're sort of carving out as different.
Well, you can also include Banana River Park because the parking lot is right there in the open. I mean, the only one that is gated is Manatee Park. Everything else is just an open parking lot.
But don't we have parking regulations that don't let people park, you know?
That's the issue, is that overnight, it's not about using the parks twenty-four seven, it's about using the parking lot overnight, which is prohibited.
Using the charging stations in the parking lots would be the only thing I would advocate for.
Yep. So we don't, we would need to potentially change the code to do that. City hall.
We can do that by tomorrow, just open it up to twenty-four hours on city hall. Because it's not considered a park.
It'd be a good test if we wanted to see it as well, but I just want to make sure that was captured. Perhaps at the next report, we could have some more information about the path to really just increasing the hours of operation for them, whether it's by hours or opening it up.
A recommendation on the pros, or at least evaluate the pros and cons of each park and what would need to be done with the code for twenty-four hour charging at those parks. We might decide, I think, that there are certain parks that it's fine to allow twenty-four seven at. I think like C. Five might be a good example, even though it's technically park property because it's so easily accessible to those parking spaces, just make, might make sense to create an exception and apply it to C. Five. But that same exception might not make sense to apply at Manatee Park because it's gated off. So if, if we put the tool in the code, the, the city council can authorize an exception for E. V. Parking on a park, case-by-case basis, that could be the solution.
I think it's worth, worth looking at.
Okay, we'll provide an, an analysis of that. And, and not by a Kim Lee Horn.
Okay. Councilmember Jackson, were there any other recommendations or proposals in here throughout this presentation that you wanted to circle back to that we would add to this?
Getting the total cost spent so far, we, so we have our total investment at this point.
That's the, that's in the first bullet.
Total investment, yeah.
Um, let's see here. Oh, warranty, potential warranty, expiration date. What projected cost would be for purchasing a maintenance policy? The potential maintenance policy cost at the end of the warranty period.
Okay, I, I think that that warranty is obviously directly related to cost. So is it three years, four, maybe, I think it's five, five years. So, you know, if something goes wrong, what does the existing warranty cover today within that five-year period? And then what happens after that period? And, you know, product warranty, workmanship, if there's anything associated with it.
Typically with the, with an upgrade.
Costs.
Yeah, typically with an upgrade, they give you a warranty period. We purchased, I know when I looked at the contract, we purchased the extended warranty that extended it to five years, but that's entirely different than a maintenance contract. So the maintenance contract price would be different than a warranty price. And that's why I was specifically saying what, you know, what are their maintenance contract prices like now? Because we can pretty much guess there will be some inflation to that, but it'll give us a little bit of an idea of what we look at at the end of the five-year period.
Understood, so O. And M. Maintenance.
Right.
That today we have, and then monitoring is sort of that, we are paying for that ongoing, and that has been put in the budget, which is, it gets partially paid for a flat fee. And that has been put in the budget, which is, it gets partially paid for a flat fee to them and maybe an on, an annual, like I said, I think it's 22,000, in between $2,000 to $3,000. According to our budget.
It looks to be around $3,000, which is not a bad thing for that extended warranty. Hopefully it'll stay low like that at the end of the warranty period, but it may go up a little. And so just having that on, you know, on our minds as far as when that ends is not a bad thing as well.
According to the invoice, the five year warranty was $3,000.
For all five years?
Yeah.
Okay, so we, we did a one time $3,000 purchase that would give us five years of maintenance.
Well, whatever the warranty covers.
And we paid that upfront?
It, it appears so, yes.
So that was a part of the, yeah, the total cost. And then there's monitoring ongoing or annual. Where am I getting the 2,400? I think it's in this last year's budget book, page 105. See, I was ready. Never can find a page. Yeah, $2,400. And, and this budget's important because it's sort of where I think a, a lot of this has come from in the public comments. And the justification is in here. And it's important to say that we, in our charter, in our capital improvement plan, our code tells us the things that we're supposed to factor. And justification is one of them. And that's why this justification tab is on every capital improvement project. Then it, the code also tells us ongoing maintenance costs, but it talks about only for facilities. So there's some interpretation on a facility. If we invest in an EV charging station, I think if we view them as facilities, it sort of guides us on, on how to do that. And, and I think this would be a more, this is big picture. We can dig in, look at the actuals. Because if this cost is continuing, we want to ask ourselves if we're still doing it. So yes, the total purchase installation was $120,000, unless this changed or was amended. What's the total contract price you're seeing, Councilmember Willis? And, and if you provided this?
Yeah, 110,000.
Six forty two.
Six forty two ninety four.
Okay. And then the ongoing is 2, 2,400. And so that 3,000 that you mentioned for the five year is a part of that 120.
Yes, part of the 110.
110. So we budgeted 120, and this will come out, but in those cash flows, I think one of the big things that we talked about was the tax credit. That was available to the private sector, but if you were a tax exempt, like a nonprofit, a church, YMCA's, schools, that tax credits were not available because they didn't pay taxes. It made sense. The changes in the federal legislation allowed essentially, even though there was no tax liability for a city, mentions tribes, nonprofit schools, churches, they now treat it essentially as a grant. It's called a direct payment. And so this year, one thing that'll really help me is understanding this 110,000 was expensed in the year 2023 is all of it.
Right.
So the, the IRS code tells us that you take 30% of those, I'm not an accountant, but our staff can look at it. Whatever that number is, if it truly is 30%, I think it is, that is essentially a revenue event, whether we agree with it or not, from the federal government, that will happen. There's some debate on how long it will take, but within a year would be sort of the longest. So while this 120,000 went out as an expense for the city, what I'm saying is, is when we go to do our 2023 financials and maybe the auditors could speak to this, I don't know if that's appropriate. But we will fill out a paper or a document submitted to the Treasury as a city, from what I understand. And they're going to basically send a direct payment check, unprecedented. And if it is 30%, it'd be $33,192. So in your cash flow, in, excuse me, our cash flow and, and looking at the analysis, it would show 120 out in year one. It's got the ongoing 2,400 year, you know, one, two, three ongoing. In year two, maybe three, we will see revenue come in that is not related to user fees, but like I said, more like a grant. So that's going to take 33,000 off. And there's some other what they call adders incentives in there that maybe the city qualifies for. But that leaves the balance just under $100,000. And so that's going to spike NPV, I think, in that it, it's actually going to, to do some things that, it's not what I would call earned revenue. Right? It was not a, because of great marketing, it wasn't because of opening access. It's just a windfall of 30% on the project cost.
And that, that would affect, that would impact the total investment, which would be ideally in the report.
Yes.
After we pass that period in time.
Yes. Sort of saying, if it goes as they're saying it's going to go, that's going to be money returned back. The, the usage data, yeah, I think we, we got through those three bullets. We talked about getting some more pros and cons of the hours of operation. My, just my general comments on this, and I've got a chance to hear, and I think you wanted to speak as well, bring it back open, is that this approach to, to how we do, spend taxpayer money is really important. And I'm excited about adding this to what we're already doing. And I think there's a lot of information that you shared sourced and helpful. And it would be in our best interest that we focus on what we do agree on. Because we can get wrapped around the axle on, you know, the items that maybe aren't good use of our time. And that, to me, are just the general idea of subs, right? This is more of a philosophy. Should the government be responsible for subsidies? And I've looked at this one and I've been looking at it for a while, you know, just the subsidies, as I just said, the tax credit, direct payments from the Inflation Reduction Act. Was it, it's, it's available in the industry that, that I've worked in, the energy sector. It's available in cars. Typically, you know, there's a 10% investment tax credit that's available in a variety of industries. But because this one goes up to 30%, originally that was proposed during the Bush W administration for solar and green energy. It was maintained and it had like a 10 year sunset, I think. And it was maintained and then it fell off. And actually the Trump administration brought it back. So it was at the full 30%. And then when the Biden administration came in, they basically extend the runway for those tax credits, subsidies for not only solar investments, but a whole bunch of other investments such as electric car charging stations. And so that argument on should we be in the business? Well, I think the spending the money, in my opinion, no. I, I don't think the government should be subsidizing. However, I'm, I do believe in fairness. And if we're going to pull that card, then we have to ask and look at the data from fossil fuels, ICE. Federal subsidies are staggeringly higher and have been, and often not temporary with sunset, but permanently put in for fossil fuel exploration. And that's good. It has a positive impact on the environment. I personally don't agree with it. And I do not agree, you shouldn't prop up one over the other. We should be the referees. You should let the market work, let the market decide. And that is what it is. And so I'm saying it, I also agree with the, the view of choice, public choice and competition. I think that that's a cornerstone to what makes our country really special, capitalism. And that choice for decades in this city and, and the America has really been oil, ice, gas cars. And the advancements and the innovation of EV vehicles, whether, is a second choice. Now, how much the government's getting involved with them, yes, spending has increased in those over the short period of time. But again, from the data I see, it pales in comparison to what is happening across the board. Also, the auto industry and market demand, because we had one choice during the recession years, there was a big bailout for all the automakers. And some economists have argued that, you know, had the market, the market made its decision there, it's sort of a lot of government interference to get to this point. But as good as we can see, if the, the limited free market in that sort of said, for whatever reason, you know, they started filing bankruptcy, the federal government not involved directly, you know, what we call corporate welfare, essentially propping them up. So what would have happened had those big automakers went out of business? And I know that some of the, I think it was really in the form of a loan and some of them paid up back. But the government stepped in and got involved. Never agreed with that. Neither with the banks, the Fannie Mae. All those types of bailouts are highly controversial. So here, little old Cape Canaveral, we've purchased six charging stations. We've spent $110,000. We've got some projected costs moving forward. We see that federal subsidy that's there. And, you know, I don't think, that's an example of something that unless we're saying no, out of principle, we want to decline the federal incentives, I'm willing to have that conversation. But it really puts me in a bad spot because when I apply that logic to other things, it, it really, it, it doesn't make sense. And so for this, the pains and the woes of the EV owner, whether it be they have longer charging times, you know, that's on, on them. And I think for us, we heard some legitimate safety concerns. The weight of the vehicles is one that we're expecting our roads to take greater wear and tear over the next decades compared. That's from what I'm seeing valid and it's very evident.
And the pollution, tire pollution is worse than.
And, and because of that, entire pollution is a big issue today. So that's going to increase. Those things need to be factored. But this is a different way of thinking than gas stations. That the places where your car already sits today for long periods of time suddenly becomes a place that makes sense to charge. So it's not about having the place on the main thoroughfare or runway where you can pop in for a five, 10 minute fill up and get on. And that's what they need because the majority of cars need convenient exits because that's how we fuel our vehicles today. But this sort of says, we're, are we going to live in a society from time where you leave your house on a full tank because you are charging from home? And if so, where are you going? And if you're going to, how, depending on how much you use, you know, it just changes that where your car goes, it sort of charges there in that space. And so we can't, we own what we own as a city. We own prime real estate at every beach entrance, parking space. And until we're going to say, you know, it, why aren't we putting, you know, gas stations there? I, I think we can, we can talk about that and look at that. I don't think that's going to more than likely get through the hurdles. But to come in with EV charging station, I take this decision seriously too. And I have thought about not only the principles of it, but in the state of Florida, the constitution of our state says that a local government has the right to become its own utility. We've got 100, 200, maybe 300 municipal owned utilities in the state of Florida. They lit, they don't sell EV charging. They sell power to the entire home. So the government is literally providing electric service. Winter Park, Bartow, New Smyrna, Jacksonville's the largest municipal, JU, OUC, Orlando Utilities Commission. And the city of Cape Canaveral provides other utility services, wastewater, stormwater. That is in enterprise funds. Those funds are ran like a business. And I think that the things that we're talking about today, like I think we got some things, we're going to be voting on some equipment and some things for those funds that are going to make us better. We should apply this. EV electric charging model is one that it's too early to go, in my opinion, you know, big, just from the technology standpoint. Because I think we're, we're, we're there. I think it's working. I think the demand is going to go really high. Where I think you can get in trouble is if you go on these level threes and try to compete with the times of gas, you get those fast charge times. Well, that's going to put a ton of kilowatt demand on the grid, those high demand chargers. And substations are going to have to be built and it's going to put a lot of load. And that is a legitimate issue is that if every vehicle today, they could not charge themselves on level three charging stations. So level two kind of sits there as the slow and low and level ones that it's, it is humorous how long it take, you know, 158 hours or so. And while level one's really slow, the, the level twos to me, which is what the city invested in, is the best for keeping the demand low on the grid. Slow and low electricity is great. That's what we want. We don't want these big, high peaks of demand on the grid. And I think electrification is great. And I'll wrap it up here. I, I think we need to have opportunity and access. I do not know how to treat, you know, gas powered fairly in this circumstance. Again, I think the real opportunity and the motive for me, why I thought this was a good idea, goes back to, well, as our city manager said, and Councilmember Willis brought up, and we all unanimously supported, the way that we were handling EVs we did not like and agree with. We did not, that, I think that struck conviction on all of us. We did, and we, we moved as quickly as we could. Staff moved in short notice and we ended that. There's no debate on that. And yes, there were citizens who were concerned about it and I think they made decisions based on that. But we, over the course of a few months, said, well, what is a fair way to do it? And that's why in my head, we did it. And it was. And it was a financial and it was what I'd call financial sustainability is. It, it's not just about environmental sustainability. Just a city can have practices that if you're not taking these steps, it's not financially sustainable. It's not viable. You don't, you won't ever become solvent. And I think it was purely an economic decision for me. It wasn't sympathy over the, the EV car owners. They made that choice to purchase that vehicle. Um, and to think anything different on what the city's role is, is not free. And I think that's what we agreed on. But to say, who else can own the beach parking spots? Who else can own, you know, the big parking lots? It's public and the commercial, private sector. And I, and I, my recommendation was that we, we do not try to get into the level three charging game. Those are very, that would tip the risk scales for us really high. I think the private sector will run with that. Um, but we don't have any projections or plans to add any new EVs from, from what I've seen. And so my hope is that we can do this, monitor it. And I think that it will be a positive NPV when we calculate this, when we do look at the cost. But I do think it'll be slower than what we saw. And that's for a lot of the reasons you said. And so when you take out the cost of electricity that we're paying and Florida's average of electricity is about 12 cents a kilowatt hour, industrial clients 11, 11 cents. I think we're all paying on our bills about 14 cents per kilowatt hour. And so we're going to still have to pay that to FPL because we're not producing our own po- power. So when we set the rate at 20 cents, 14 or 12 cents goes out and eight cents is left over. That's, as we were saying, profit, I guess, cost of goods be the cost of electricity. Then when you do the overhead, the maintenance and all that, I still see cents per kilowatt left over. I'm not clear on exactly how much that is. And when we do that times the 12 and roll it out, I think it was a smart financial decision. And then that is not my way of saying that I disagree with a lot of the things and the information that was, uh, provided. And I am always tried to remain open and flexible, but EV sales passed a million units last year. Uh, it's now made up eight, 12, maybe even higher percentage. I wrote the numbers down of the market share. And so we did see some lags. We saw reductions in projections, but it was so optimistic that that we saw reductions in non-EV as well. And so I think their coming EVs are the billions of dollars being invested by the legacy, uh, auto companies is a testament. Out of all the new car sales, over 50% are Tesla. I think there's a reason for that. Uh, they sort of led the market. I do believe that EVs will continue to grow as a percentage of market share. Whether it's going to be over 50% by 2030, I don't know. I don't have a crystal ball, but the trend line today shows, yes, a Q4 dip. And I think it will continue to grow for, for a lot of reasons. Um, and so my hope was to say, I believe that the market is here. Whether I 100% disagree with state law over in California required, getting rid of the tailpipe, um, getting, you know, reducing choice. Uh, that, that's not the right direction. But 165,000 cars were registered in the state of Florida. I think I was reading, um.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Pardon me, I have to leave it for an engagement at 6 o'clock.
Let's wrap it up. Oh, you need to go now?
Yes, I need to go now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Willis. So that really concludes my thoughts on it, just kind of a big picture. And we will see. I know that the city's 120,000 and I think that this is going to be cash flow positive. Uh, I firmly believe that. And if it takes longer than expected, again, I would compare that to the other investments the city makes. And it would rank very high. And that's, that's, those are my thoughts. So my hope is, if there's not anything here, we can go back to the public, city manager, please.
I just want to make sure while we still have a consensus, I can get some things agreed on here that, um, are, uh, receivables. The three bullets we see on the screen right there, we already got consensus on the re- uh, providing report on staff's capability to provide that on a quarterly basis. That one's good. There's two other things they need consensus on. An analysis of, um, allowing park 24/7 EV charging usage and needed code revisions. Is there a consensus on council to re- provide that analysis report? For parks, for parking at parks, city parks?
Uh, yeah, I thought we took that one, the pros and cons.
Yep. And the third and final, um, receivable is a report on the warranty, what's included and provide potential maintenance costs after expiration of warranty. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, anything?
Yeah, I have one last question. Um, city manager, on our vehicles that are electric, which stations do they use?
Um, it would make sense for them to be at the facilities that where they're located.
Okay, so do, do we have one at the wastewater plant?
We've, we put the Clipper Creeks back out there, the old ones.
Okay.
Or some, not all of them.
In other words, would any of this data show the city's usage of recharging?
And are they, how are they getting access if we've got credit card swappers on there?
Um, Zach would have that answer, but, um, I recall we talked about that, that the, the cities would be, doesn't make sense for the city to pay itself to drive its own, power its own cars. So it's like, um, this is how I see it. It's a get electricity free card for the, for the city fleet.
All right. And then one other thing I wanted to say is, um, Zach had given me some information on the charging hours during that timeframe that we're looking at. There were 843 charging hours in a 35-day period. Okay? The city of Cape Canaveral Community Center Charging Station, which is one station with two plugs, had 70 individual charging sessions. The Banana River Charging Station, one station with two plugs, had 18. Manatee Park has one station with two plugs. There were 82 individual charging sessions. And then City Hall has the three stations with total of six. And there were 143 individual charging stations, uh, charging sessions recorded.
And I'm, I'm looking at the PlugShare app, which I downloaded while we're talking here. And the first thing you see is a map and it shows all those stations. And there, each one has a score. They call it a plug score. And I'm not quite sure what goes into that plug score, but they're color-coded. It's green, seems to be the higher ones, gray is more middle range, some are just not rated at all. But yeah, those are out there. So if we talked about the marketing piece, it's already on the app that people use.
And he said also between 3:00 PM and 9:00 PM were the peak times for charging? Which is interesting, after work, right?
Mm-hmm.
Total kilowatt hours dispensed was 4,892.11.
Say that again, if you don't mind.
4,892 dot 11 was the total kilowatt hours dispensed.
So 4,800 or almost 40, just under 5,000 kilowatt hours is what that number was?
Uh, 4,892.
Kilowatt hours?
Kilowatt hours.
At 12 cents, that's $587.
Cost?
Yeah.
And our, and we made 1,055.
Right.
Uh, total revenue? So you'd have to take the 1,055 and subtract the.
Well, that's actually not correct because the 900 and, um, I don't know what period the 4,892 was for because he gives me charging sessions and he was, I was saying it was 35 days. However, the, um, 1,055 was from when, uh, when they were upgraded in early December until this, uh, February 11th. So we'd probably want to take a look at that. But the 843 plus hours, um, is what he was saying cumulative charging time that we recorded, people plugging in to charge. And then the total kilowatt hours dispensed was the 4,892.
Thank you. City manager, did you have anything?
I'm clear. Thank you, sir.
Mayor Pretim Kellum?
I'm ready.
Let me go to the public. Andrea, would you like to say something, please? Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to try to keep it short, um. Um, quarterly reports. I like that idea and I suggest that when those reports come out, that they be publicly published on the city's weekly email. That everybody knows how much it's costing, how much we're making, the good news, the bad news, et cetera. If, that it be included, obviously it won't be weekly, but when they come out, um, include those in. And this would al- also be an element of marketing because the whole community who gets these newsletters will see it. And then if they have guests coming in or et cetera, then they can guide their guests to it if they have an EV. It's all part of the marketing plan. I mean, you know, the, obviously we need to be telling them, they're not here. Okay, um, let's see. What dollar figure do we need to hit to break even on those monthly costs? I think that that ought to be divided out by the output, by the financial output. How, how much do we need to bring in to even just cut even? Okay, um, are the parking lots lighted? Do we, are they lighted? I, I don't even know. I mean, I don't go to the parking lots at night, I mean, the, the, the park, parking lots. Okay, there's that. Um, if, if something happens, can we get out of the contract with this company that we've contracted with? How bound are we? Are we stuck? Or can, or if, if they're not showing any revenue, I know that's a bad case scenario. Okay, but we have to look at that too. What do we do? I mean, do we just keep paying good money after bad for five years?
They're, they're bought and paid for.
Okay, so the company, so we're all done with the company. They're, they're gone away. Okay, all right, okay. Um, and then, um, let's see. Oh, yes, well, that, and that's going to be part of the report, the usage. Which ones are being used? I, I, I'm curious about that. The ones over at the community center? How, how, are they, are they viable? I mean, I asked the folks that work there today. I went and worked out and I said, huh, do you see car? Yeah, we see a car there overnight. Yeah, there's a car there now. Oh, I'd like to know, how much usage are each of these stations getting? And I think that'll be part of the report from what I understand. Okay. And is it revenue, profit or loss for each one of those? Which ones are giving us the most profit? Which one's the least? So I think, I think if we can really parse this and explain it to the people, uh, uh, it's going to be, first of all, it'll, it'll show that there's accountability amongst this board and city staff. And that's not bad. That's always good. Um, basically that's it. That's, that's what I have to say. And I want to say thank you very much, all of you, for doing what you're doing. I know that this is important to the city. And again, if we can implement a policy that says from now on, over a certain amount of expenditure that the city makes has to come through, come through the, the council. It can't just be willy-nilly and the people need to know about it. Use the weekly newsletter to keep the people informed. There's a lot of stuff on that newsletter I don't care about. It's, it's filler. I know, I used to do reports when I worked out at the Space Center and I know how to do filler. I want numbers. I want facts. I want data. I want things that the taxpayer out there is going to look at and go, oh, you're going to be educated. Even if they don't come, give them the information anyway. And that's it. Have a nice evening. Thank you, all of you.
Thank you. I think the investment, the question that, uh, Andrea asked about the cost and you said we've already spent that, we basically own the assets today, so.
It's a better payback time to pay for them.
We could resell those assets, right? Liquidate, uh, but the, the ongoing 2,400, what happens if we don't pay that? It's probably, it's probably spelled out in the agreement if I remember, but you know, if we get in, we don't pay that, do the stations stop working? I think we had, we looked at that and can you swap or do they own the software? Could we swap? Because they do that monitoring and they, the whole, like PayPal, the merchant service.
I think that's merchant services, like the support of the backend. Yeah.
Yeah, because you know how it is sometimes is you don't renew that fee and suddenly the whole thing doesn't work. You know, and then you're really. Um, okay, well, uh, I think, any other public comments? Sarah, would you like to speak? Well, I, I think we can bring it back here. Um, we got consensus on those few items that our city manager read back. I am excited about learning more. We will be uni- at least be able to say the same things. And we may not even agree, but what's most important is that we are saying the same numbers, you know? It's because 20, you know, we're only X percent that I don't think. And other council might say, well, it's because of that same percent that I do think is the good conversation. But when one's over here with an amount and the other is over here, um, I think that this, that's going to help us have better information so that we can make really good decisions. This sort of was a messy, uh, way that it happened over the years and those Clipper Creeks. I think we squeezed as much value out of them as we can by using our existing fleet. But, um, we all want to make the right decisions. So if there's not any other comments, uh, Councilmember Jackson, you can have the final word.
I just want to thank everyone for our, for your time. Coming from a systems background, this was something that I think that we need to look at. And just for the monitoring going forward, so we know what we're dealing with. It helps, it will help us make better decisions, um, and make sure we're aligned with costs and all of that. So that's, uh, I appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you. And thank you again for all of the work you've done. It's very awesome, very informative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't ask me to read anything because I'll.
Well, thank you. Any reports? I know it's just a workshop, but anything you need to say?
No, sir.
Okay. Good? With that, the meeting adjourned. Thank you.